Will, could you please stand for the pledge? Ms. Francis, can you lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces? Thank you. Walter?
Okay, I think my glasses are fogged. Renee, is that you? Renee, uh, my, I think my glasses are fogged.
Renee Malthor.
It is Renee.
Or Irene Malthor.
Irene.
There we go.
Just a little bit late for dinner. Hello, Will.
Hi, Dr. Peter, how are you? I'm just going to talk briefly about the library since that's why we're all here. Libraries are an important cornerstone to a healthy community. Now, I'm not just saying this, this is the Brookings Institute that came up with this. They really serve such an important need in the community. It gives people the opportunity to find jobs, explore medical research, experience new ideas, and get lost in wonderful stories while at the same time providing a sense of place of gathering. Libraries are also the great equalizer. This is where the rich and the poor, DAR members such as Ms. Francis, and a child of immigrants like myself, conservatives and progressives, and the young and old can all rub shoulders on an equal ground. This is very, very unique in our community today, and it's something precious and it should be cherished. You can see in this sense, I'm going to go out on a limb here, you can see in a sense that libraries are almost like the new churches where the truth is found. Libraries do more than to simply offer books on a shelf, although this in and of itself is still a very powerful thing. Some people think that the library will one day be minimized by the Internet, but this isn't actually true at all. The library is not in competition with the Internet, rather it serves as a point of contact. Internet literacy should be taught in schools, however, it's not sadly in the United States. So how can you tell fact from fiction, editorializing from hard journalism from a reputable source? You go to the library, you ask a librarian, they're not going to judge you if you're, you know, Red State or Rachel Maddow, they will give you the facts, and that's more of what we need today in this society. Thank you, librarians. The New Milford Library is often the only readily available source of comprehensive information needed by people for personal, family, and job-related purposes. People go there to make, to decide on wise business decisions, they use it to improve job skills, and the disadvantaged use it to help break the cycle of poverty. During economic hardship, our citizens often turn to and depend on the library. A friend of mine actually works in a library in San Francisco, and they go as far as to have substance abuse outreach in their libraries because unfortunately drug abuse is a problem, and sometimes the library is a great place to shoot up. But this is how you reach these people, same thing with homeless outreach. I'm not saying New Milford needs something like that because that is on a much greater scale, but they're such important places because it's a no judgment zone. I'm finishing up, I promise. Last week, I saw many young athletes being praised for their sportsmanship and achievements, and the mayor said New Milford has winners, and that's terrific because it builds sportsmanship and teamwork. But I'm a athlete. I was picked last for dodgeball, this was not my thing. And the library is where I exercised my brain, and that was my strength. And do it for the poets and the writers and the readers of New Milford because they need a place to exercise too. Our library is a unique and valuable resource, it's a lifeline to the world and all the information in it. The intellectual and economic health in our community depends on it. We need to have library expansion, and let's have the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Johnson, please.
Hi, Debbie Johnson. First of all, I want to thank you all for getting us this far for the library, this is farther than we've been in a long time. But I'm embarrassed to admit we're only one of two libraries in the whole state that hasn't been modernized, it's time to get it done. Let's keep the momentum going, we need to vote, and we need to vote now and get this done. Let's not wait any longer and waste any more time. That's all I have to say.
Lauren Ryan, please.
Same old lady as last time. I have an article from the New York Times Sunday Review. Some of you may have seen it or read it, or it has been sent to you. It's a very important article, I will not read it. I will just say the opinion by Eric Klinenberg, a professor of sociology at New York University and the author of the forthcoming book Palaces for the People: How Social Infrastructure Can Help Fight Inequality. And the idea that you are my enemy, and I'm going to fight you, and I don't like you, and you don't like me, we have to be educated, we have to be strong, and we have to stay together. Polarization and the decline of civic life from which this essay is adapted. I think the library is the jewel in the crown of the Green and New Milford, and I think it should be enhanced and sustained and improved and not turned down for the third or fourth time, which is unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Dill, please.
My name is Carl Dill, I live at 23 Whittlesey Avenue right here in town. All of you on the board were elected to make decisions for the people of New Milford. If you send it back to the people of New Milford to make a decision that you should be making, I don't think you're showing the kind of leadership that is the reason that you were selected and why you're sitting at this table, that's my opinion. Vote for this thing, get it done, because the people who are on the Internet who remain faceless, who are opposed to anything that spends a nickel are going to be against doing it, you know that. The people who are for it are sitting here in this audience, including myself. I urge you to keep it away from a referendum because it's not an honest way to get something done in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anne? Anne? I can't read the last name.
Readyoff. Yes, Readyoff.
Thank you.
I've been in town for 38 years.
Can you just state your name so I can get?
Anne Readyoff. I've been in town for 38 years. The library's been an important part of my life, my children's lives, and now my grandchildren's lives. Our kids need it more today than they've ever needed it before. It's a place for them to gather and get together, do projects, there's clubs for them, it keeps them off the streets, it's a gathering place for a lot of people. It's very important to our community. We can't lose it, we have a very high rate of people using the library, our numbers are one of the highest in the state, and we need to make it bigger, better, and keep it there for future generations.
Trevor?
Trevor Herbst, 23 Long Mountain Road. Just wanted to, I unfortunately missed the meeting last week. Been here for four years, that library was my home. It's all you to say, that's it, thanks.
Do you have any other wish, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Walter.
Item three on our agenda, I will move that in accordance with Section 7-7 of the Connecticut General Statutes, to remove item one from the call of the special town meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on September 26, 2018, for submission to the voters along with the state election that is set for Tuesday, November 6, 2018, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
Any discussion? Dr. Mullin?
Let's clarify what we're saying. What we're saying by voting for this is we want a referendum and not a town meeting, correct?
Attorney? Is that Dr. Mullin's correct?
I mean, the people need to decide this question one way or the other, the town meeting vote is mandated by Charter Section 503. As we learned during the budget referendum process, a referendum is an adjourned town meeting, meaning you're taking a question that would be decided in an evening town meeting and elevating it to an all-day vote on the voting machines. Okay, so. I will simplify that since I'm not an attorney. If we vote for this, we're voting for a referendum November?
6th. 6th.
That's a lot clearer, November 6th.
And having?
If we vote against this, we will have a town meeting September 26th and vote maybe in this room, maybe in another location, I think this room has been reserved for the 26th. So. My viewpoint is it should go to a town meeting. Three years ago, when the turf fields came up, there were no objections to a town meeting. Katie, Mayor, Paul.
Walter.
Walter. No one objected, okay? It went to a town meeting. This should go to a town meeting and not a referendum. And part of why I'm saying that is, there was an old joke years ago, and I can't remember the gentleman's name, but it's probably been 20 years ago, and he would be asked, "Are you going to vote this week?", and he would say, "Against why?" And sometimes when you want to improve your town in such a way as a library, or even turf fields, if you put it, or aquatic center, which I still do sleep over, if you put it out there to everyone, there's enough people who say, "I don't want to spend a nickel on it" because they don't value it. They don't want to spend any money because they see no value in it, even though there's enormous value in it. There's enormous value in aquatic center, there's enormous value in getting your library up to date. In my profession, I deal with this every day. People either value or don't value their oral health, that's what I do with every day, and I try to convince them that holding on to your teeth is a good thing. Making your town a better place by improving the library and spending the money, you're going to commit to the money, it's worth it because the value is there. And if you send it to a referendum, you're running the risk of this not going through and losing that value. Thank you, Mayor.
Dr. Mullin, I know that this has come up before, so I'm going to start by saying, first of all, clearly I'm in favor of the library, this is the second commission, committee I sat on myself, I am clearly in favor of fixing our library and bringing it up to par. You mentioned the turf fields, which, yes, that was done through a town meeting, 4. something million, is that right, Beth?
4 million.
Okay, so we're talking about 6.5, and it's not the $2 million more that really gets to me. A lot of people were upset then that it was done by a town meeting, those, many of those people still remind me, you could be one, that they thought it wasn't fair, for a lot of reasons, either coming out on Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, whenever the town meeting is, at 7 o'clock isn't good for them, having a whole day to vote is better, there's a lot of other reasons. However, those, we still have in this town, a lot of people are upset that they didn't have an opportunity to go and vote for it in a referendum. I believe we should not, as a council, and I heard the comment from Mr. Dill, and I respect him greatly, yes, we are elected to do what our residents want us to do, I don't feel I'm shirking it because I think what our residents do want to do is to have an opportunity, as in any other thing that we vote on, either nationally, statewide, and usually locally, to be able to go between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. This is a tremendous amount of money that we're spending, I think that it's important that we have a question and answer session, which we will have on the 26th, if this is, this does not, if we vote this down and we go to a referendum, so that anybody in this town who wants to know more about why we want to do this, all of us here, and more, we can answer those. It's going to really bring to light a lot of things that people won't say here, because we can't answer anything here, it's a comment, not a conversation. So I believe that this library will pass no matter how it's done, because people want it, that's been proven by all the people that have been here time, the last three times now, we had them hanging out in the street. So while I understand the point of getting it over with in a hurry, I believe that after all these years, that another six weeks, a chance to have an open forum of answering questions and being more transparent on how it's going to be paid for, what is the impact to the taxpayer, is what we all should want. I don't want people coming up to me and saying, "You know, I'm still upset you did that with the turf, and by the way, I'm upset that you did that with the library." People sometimes just don't get it out of their craw, and our job is to do what the majority wants. I know what people have said to me, I know what I feel is right, and I love that library. So I'll stand by the opposite of what you said, Peter, I respect it, but I do think at 6.5 million, we're way over the line of where we should be doing it at a town meeting. I'm Peter.
Mr. Gold?
Mayor, can you just explain to me again, and certainly to the public, of how this works if we decide to go to a town meeting on the 26th? I understand that there, excuse me, that there could be a petition put forth?
Certainly so. To Attorney, to Attorney Grimes, according to our charter, which I don't think the public is aware, how many signatures would it take to elevate this to a referendum?
It's actually by statute, Mayor. Statute 7-7, which is the statute that talks about elevating a town meeting vote to a referendum, you can get to a referendum one of two ways, with a petition, as Councilman Gold suggested, which requires 200 or more persons, or 10% of the total number qualified to vote, whichever is less. So obviously, in New Milford's case, that's 200 signatures filed up to 24 hours before the town meeting.
So someone theoretically could go and get 200 signatures presented 24 hours prior to the town meeting, and it automatically elevates it to a referendum?
That is correct, and unlike with the council, the town meeting would be confined to a seven to 14-day window following the town meeting to have that referendum. They would not be, the advantage the council is in being able to put it on a vote that's already scheduled, meaning, as we learned, it would be a five-figure number if this were, referendum were created by a petition, and there's nothing that could be done to deny the petition either.
So that would automatically trigger the date, which would be?
Seven to 14 days out.
Then they get the registrar and everybody together?
Open to holding places.
Actually, to get that to the vote?
Correct.
Plus the additional cost it would cost for the referendum?
Correct.
What does it cost for a referendum?
I believe 18,400 or something like that.
So hypothetically, if we say, rah rah rah, we're going to have a town meeting September 26th, somebody could stand on the corner, gather 200 signatures, turn around, present it to the town clerk?
Correct.
And say, "Nope, we want it to go to referendum", and the town then has to pay for a separate referendum?
Correct.
Besides the vote in November?
Correct.
So it's risky to have a town meeting? Or do we, do we know that this may happen? Or is this, I mean, I wish I had a crystal ball, for sure.
So do I.
But it's?
So does everyone.
It sounds very risky to me. Thank you.
Mr. Daniel?
First of all, when I came to the meeting, when we first had you guys speak, we decided, I was against the library, and you did a great job of convincing me that it is important to expand the library. I was one of the people that said, "It's not used enough, no one uses the library", and you guys gave us the numbers and told us how many people are using it, and how important is it as a baseline, you know, a meeting place, all the for downtown, and how important is it downtown. So I was swayed, so that's the job that you're going to have to do. I, you know, I have a, I agree with Katie, and I went to the town meeting for the turf field, and it was packed with people that were for it, and I don't care how important, how favorable something is, you do not get that percentage in the overall town, people wanting a field, but the people that were supporting it go out in droves. More than 10 years ago, I was involved in the town meeting, my father was trying to buy, and a group of people was trying to buy a piece of land, the one behind Starbucks, along with a piece of land that they own, which is in front of Starbucks, and that group still owns that land, and everyone in the town was for it, and town government was for it, we had all the approvals, but in order to buy that land, we had to go to a town meeting. A group of people decided that they didn't think it was worthwhile for us to buy that land, so they came in droves, voted it down, that land's still empty, the other piece of property is still empty, we were going to build a hotel, we were going to have apartments, mixed use, it was a beautiful development, and it got voted down because people stacked at town meeting. I just feel that it's not enough people and not enough representation to have, especially for six, over $6 million, at a town meeting, it's just things can happen. So as I said, you're going to have six weeks of whatever it is to convince people, and I'm going to be wanting to convince them, I'll be on Facebook stating just what I said, I was against it until I found out how important it is to a good portion of this town. We need to do that to everybody to get it approved, but I just, I feel that town meetings aren't a good representation, especially for this dollar market. I'm actually in favor, and I don't know if it's something possible, of creating a number that, once it goes above that number, say it's 1% of the town budget, we should automatically go to referendum, because I just do believe that it's as important. I was voted by the taxpayers, not just the taxpayers that want the library, every taxpayer, so I'm here to represent all of them.
Skell?
I'm probably going to shock a lot of people in this room, but I agree with Dr. Mullin. I was on the turf committee, and I fought for the turf, and I went through the process. I respect my fellow town council members' opinion, but that's a process that we've used before. And if we want to change the process, then I agree with Councilwoman Mayone, then we need to address that maybe 1%, and then it needs to go to an automatic referendum. But when I approached the mayor and I approached the town council, the special meeting, or the town meeting was the process we went through. So, until we change that, I sleep better at night knowing that what I did and why I asked the town for a special meeting, I'll sleep better than knowing that I'm going with the status quo and going with the referendum. So I'm in favor of doing the town meeting until we change the process.
So not to put anybody on the spot, but I hear the history of the library, I'm for the library expansion, by the way, my sister-in-law's a librarian, so kind of by familial vote, I have to be for the library, but I do value libraries, I grew up in a rural area, and I know what value they bring. Compared to the last series of referendums and or votes that happened with the library, is the difference if this town council is all in support of it?
I think so, I believe so.
Didn't get the scar before.
So I, so I think that's a key thing to take into consideration, and you know me, it's no surprise, I'm all about process, I really do believe when we get above a certain dollar limit, like other municipalities, we owe it to the taxpayers to all have a voice, and it should automatically go to referendum. Just because we did it one way in the past doesn't mean we shouldn't change the way we're doing it now, to put some better processes in place, and all of us have to be committed. I will do the same thing, I will go out on Facebook and I will do whatever it takes to make sure that people understand, I am fully in support of this, to make sure that it passes, but I think it needs to go to a referendum now. Let me throw this out, a little controversial, do we want to bridge the gap by maybe we have a referendum, but we say we're going to spend the 18.5, and we do it sooner rather than later? I know we've faced some ugly monetary problems in the past eight months, but let me throw that out as a possible compromise. Do we want to think about that?
Are you saying have a referendum prior to?
By itself?
Yep. Get it done. People said they wanted to get it done, we say, you know, most of us say we want a referendum, so do the taxpayers want us to spend that $18,000 on that versus something else? I personally am very comfortable with the library expansion because not only do I have a value for it, but I've seen the details of the interest of our bonds falling off and coming back on, and I don't believe this is going to cause the taxpayers a dime extra. That for me was another part of the big litmus test. So this is a frugal use, as Dr. Mullin likes to talk about, of our assets, but let's do it sooner rather than later. Just a few for thought?
So why not just go to a town meeting?
Because I believe that a broader perspective of the taxpayers need to have a voice, we've always said that, or I've always said that, that it's about having transparency and letting people come and decide how the money's spent, not just a few.
Town meetings are very?
The only way to do that is referendum.
Town meetings are very intimidating places. I've been to many, I've been to votes that have worked and votes that haven't, and a lot of times, it's the angst, or anger, or enthusiasm in the room. I don't think it truly represents everybody in town, I've heard the same things as Councilwoman Francis has said regarding the turf fields. I also heard it when we moved three departments into a municipal center that now became a community center without anybody voting on that either, because we had a committee of one. So there's a lot of people still angry about those things, those series of events that happened over the years. And I am 100% in support of getting this library done, which I don't think was, as you brought up, that it never got this far before. You never had nine unanimous council people say, "We want this library", and you've never had it going out to the public like we are about to do. This library is the jewel of the town, there is no doubt. I don't, the people that I've spoken to that had misgivings are totally turned around and like this library concept, and I think that if you go to, if you go to referendum, you're going to thwart the people that could potentially thwart this in a town meeting. I've seen it before, I was as shocked as the neighborhoods were years ago, when we could have had a beautiful conference center, hotel, and a tax-paying piece of property behind Starbucks, and it was killed. That could happen here, that can't happen if you go to referendum. There's enough people who are going to come out and vote and support this library, I believe it, and I will go out there and I'll walk doors with anybody in this room to do it. And I think almost everybody in the room would, because this is that important, and I think if we stand solid and we show solidarity here, not only as a town council, as the library, the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, every board across this town, I think if people step up and support this, you're going to have a tremendous outreach from that referendum, and it's going to support what you folks have been trying to do for the last 35 years, and let's get this library redone. I think it's a safer way, it will guarantee you getting the library done. I've been in too many ugly bullying-type of events here when it came to town meetings that I don't think served the public right, I just don't. I'm going to support the referendum, but I am going to come out and publicly support it. I'll stand in front of any camera and tell any group of constituents that you want how I think this library needs to be done, and needs to be done now.
Ms. Francis?
I have a question for you, Grimes. So if, to Councilwoman Heda's point about doing, having a referendum, so we spend the money to have it, what is the timeframe we'd be put in?
Well, it's, it's a difficult time of year for the registrars and the town clerk as it is. Military ballots need to go out this coming Monday.
You mean for the state elections?
For the state election. Absentee ballots need to become available on October 5th, and there's three questions besides the election being voted on already on November 6th, so it requires a notice requirement. We're probably looking sort of referendum sometime smack in the middle of?
The middle of October, that's what I think. So two weeks, three weeks earlier than the?
Three weeks before the November election at most.
November 6th.
Remember, in the, for Columbus Day weekend, the kids are off from Monday and Tuesday. Tuesdays are normally referendum day, you don't want to have this when the children are off. You want to have this when everybody is here.
Well, I don't think we'd have it on holiday.
Right, unfortunately, if it does? Unfortunately, if it does go out into November, there's going to be a big turnout this year, and I think that's going to go in the library's favor in a big way in November, if it has to go that far.
And you're stuck in the limited window, too, because the voting machines, the tabulators, I believe, need to be on lockdown for a certain number of days before the election. So, you're...
Okay, so, we're putting ourselves in a really constrained amount of time there.
Ballots are doing in...
Well, I'll stand by what I said. The Board of Finance, you said it right, Tom. The Board of Finance, every council member, Board of Education, it's never happened this way. I've been disappointed in these committees before, as my co-committee people have, and I think doing this completely by the book is the way to show people and stand for what we believe in, and we're all telling you that we're going to, including the mayor. He's in favor of it.
Absolutely.
So, I think we just have to be diligent between now and November, and I think that people are much more likely to want to listen to what we have to say about our beautiful library than most of what's going on that they're going to have to vote on. So, I mean, it's a nice topic to talk about.
I do, I agree that we have our work ahead of us to get the word out. That's why I think we just stick with the regular state election, because we do need to convince people. As I said, I'm very fiscally frugal, and, you know, I walked into the mayor's office, and he showed me why we need to do this. He showed me how it's, the bond's falling off, that it's not going to be, it's not going to be a big hit in the town, and you guys showed me the number of people using it. We have to show other people that have the same, similar mindset to me that it is important.
Walter?
To me, the beauty of democracy is we can, we can agree to disagree. Dr. Mullin, I hear what he says, and I like it. Katie Francis, I hear what she says, and I like it. And here's a Democrat. Here's a Republican. Here's another Democrat. There's a Republican. I'm in favor of the vox popula. What does that mean? Let the people decide. I'm in favor of a referendum.
Well put, Walter, as always.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say one last thing. I think the people that I've spoken to, a very broad group of folks, that I have not seen in this room in all the meetings, they're in favor of this. I think if you do it in this direction, you're going to create more winners and more people happy with this process, and it will go farther for other things we want to do that are good for this community, that we can move this community into the future. I truly believe that. This is the time. There's very few of them that come up, and it's disturbing to hear Mr. Dill say it's not an honest way to get things done in town. I think maybe years ago, you were right. When I first got involved here in this room, almost 10 years ago, yeah, I would say it wasn't. Today, it's a different story. I truly believe that. I have a lot of faith in the people in this town. I have the faith in the people in this room, and the faith across this town that people are going to vote for this thing, and I will go door-to-door with you, Sally.
She didn't ask.
Dr. Mullin?
When you ask, you know it's a yes.
There were a few comments here I do feel I have to respond to. I thought you spoke very well, Mr. Dill. I disagree with what Mr. Esposito just said. Moving departments to a community center, departments have been moved in the past without town votes. There's no reason, as somebody said, "Get this over in a hurry." No, this isn't a hurry. This has been discussed for years. We're not getting anything over in a hurry. By the book, this is by the book. You can have a town meeting. That's by the book. You're allowed. So, when somebody says, "Do it by the book," well, that's by the book. There you go. If you know where I stand on this, let's take a vote.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm against it.
Motion carries.
Item four. I move to authorize the town attorney to create a ballot question for appropriating the renovation and expansion of the New Milford Public Library and to authorize the town clerk's office to submit said question to the Secretary of State.
Second.
Any discussion? All those, Dr. Mullin?
Does the town council get to look at that question before it goes to the Secretary of State? No, that's why you're authorizing me to look. Not that I don't trust you in that, but...
I'll show it to you.
I'd just like to see. I think the town council should have a look at that question.
I have a question for the town attorney. I agree with you 100%. We like to see everything that goes out of here that we say, and I would like, if you just please copy us all on that. Is that agreeable?
Do you want me to read you a tract of it so far?
No, I would just email it to us, you know? Unless you want to hear and read it out now, it's up to you.
I'll take a vote.
Yep.
Do we have a copy of it, Matt?
No, I don't.
No, did we get, we didn't.
Well, I can email it to you because...
We emailed it to him.
I met with Lori here today in...
I would like to... No, I know. I'm just making sure it's not a meeting that's, yeah, I guess it's...
But you will email it?
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
To the extent of what most capital referendums would be, it's, show the sum of $6,500,000 be appropriated to fund the expansion, renovation and expansion of the New Milford Public Library and to authorize the issuance of bonds, notes, and temporary notes for appropriation of the same. Yes, no? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I promise you, I will email it as soon as I get it...
I know you will. If you don't, I'll ask you again. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Dr. Mullin.